Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 8, 2019 Salisbury City Council Legislative Session. I would ask you, please, if you have any electronic devices that make any noise, please to turn them off. If you need to make a phone call, we ask that you do it outside the chamber, in the hallway. If for some reason an emergency should arise during the meeting, we ask that you exit in an orderly manner, make a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn and then a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If you need assistance, please ask, and it will be provided to you. Please do not use the elevator if there is an emergency. At this time, I'll call Pastor Dana Stouffer of Fruitland Campus Emmanuel Wesleyan Church for our invocation. Good evening, Pastor.
Good evening. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you so much for this beautiful, beautiful day that you've given us. And God, I thank you, Lord, for the city of Salisbury. Lord, I've grown up here as a child, and it's been so awesome, Lord, to see all the changes, all the growth, and the development that has taken place. Lord, we know that behind that takes good leadership, and it takes a good vision. So, Lord, I pray for Mayor Day tonight, God. Lord, wherever he may be, God, I pray that you would go where he's at right now, Lord. I pray for a hedge of protection upon him, God. I pray, Lord, that you would bless him and his family, Lord. And, Lord, I pray for every person that's represented around this table tonight, God. I thank you for their leadership. Lord, I thank you for the things they do behind the scenes that people don't even know that they do, God. I thank you for their heart and the mission, the vision that they have for this city. So, God, I pray, Lord, for your anointing to fall on this place. Even in a room like this, God, your presence can still be here. God, we pray for unity, we pray for peace, and again, God, we just thank you for what you're doing in this city. In Jesus' name, and everybody say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. At this time, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Some move.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtin. Of all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, you forgot the presentation.
Ms. Blake.
The presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Eric, I apologize to you. I read right over it. That's why you should check the boxes. At this time, we have a presentation from Maryland's Community Solar Pilot Program, presented by Eric Misbach, Associate Director of Community Solar Operations, Nexamp.
All right. Hello, thank you so much for having me. My name is Eric Misbach, and I am a representative of a solar company called Nexamp. And Nexamp has built a community solar farm that'll be serving much of the eastern shore, including here in the city of Salisbury. I'm here tonight to make sure that the councilwomen and councilmen are aware of what I've discussed with Mayor Day and the community outreach that we are conducting, that my colleagues and I are conducting, in the city. We just had a public information session this past Saturday at the library, and we're holding another one this coming Tuesday at the library at 6:00 PM. We want to make sure you're all aware of this work that we're doing. I'll try to keep this real brief, but I do want to start with the big picture. A few years back, the state legislature and the Public Service Commission worked together to create some rules around Maryland's clean energy goals. One of those was the Community Solar Pilot Program. Community solar is a concept that's become more and more popular in various states around the country, and your state has recently enacted this as a policy. It allows companies like my own to build large-scale solar arrays, and that that solar power is then shared with individual households, so that folks aren't putting solar panels on their roof, but they have access to this shared resource. And the Public Service Commission purposely put in a requirement into Maryland's community solar laws that portions of these solar farms are reserved specifically for the low- and moderate-income population. The intent there is to make sure that solar power is made accessible and affordable to those who could most benefit from the electricity savings and who can't afford to put solar on their roofs or otherwise benefit from more traditional sources of solar power. Well, the mission of making solar power more accessible and affordable is, in fact, what Nexamp does. We were founded over a decade ago by two U.S. Army veterans. And when we started out, we were more traditional. We put solar power on folks' roofs. But then we started building these larger-scale solar projects. And in our home state, Massachusetts, when they passed a community solar regulation in 2015, we jumped at that opportunity to be able to use our large-scale solar projects but serve individual households. When we launched our community solar program, it was widely known to be one of the most accessible and equitable solar programs out there, and we were awarded for that as the Clean Energy Company of the Year. And a lot of our work across the Northeast has been awarded, and we've been widely recognized. We are relatively new to the state of Maryland. I'll admit that right up front, and that's because Maryland had only recently enacted this community solar pilot program. So, we have now entered this state, and we've built our first community solar project. It is out on Kent Island, but it serves all of the Delmarva Power Utility Territory. So, on this map that you see, it's all of the blue areas, and that includes you in the city of Salisbury. This is one of those solar projects that falls under that rule that more than half of it has to be reserved for the low- and moderate-income population. We've already filled more than half of our solar farm with households that want to participate in this, and the remaining portion is only for low- and moderate-income population or for organizations or institutions that serve that population. So, that can include affordable housing developments, or nonprofits, or government agencies that serve the lower-income population. It's worth just a brief explainer about how this works, if it's not already clear. This solar power from this shared solar farm is feeding electricity into the grid. The grid is still the grid. Delmarva Power is still feeding electricity to people's homes. But as part of this opt-in program, if you choose to participate, if you want to support this solar power, and if you want to get the benefits from it, you subscribe to our program, and you get credit on your electric bill for some of the value of the solar electricity at this solar farm. Nexamp has designed its program specifically to be very flexible. It was like this from the start, and we've continued this here in this market, that it doesn't cost anything to sign up. There's also no minimum credit requirements. We want it to be available to literally anybody. And there's no cancellation penalty. Some folks might choose to put their own solar panels up on their roof, and we're not going to penalize them from then canceling our program because they have a different source of solar. Or if you move out of the utility territory, that's perfectly fine. You're not locked into a long-term contract with this program. Of course, there's a financial benefit. It's a 10% savings on this electricity from the solar farm. And like I said before, right now, this is specifically reserved for households that fall under these income thresholds. There's a longer list, depending on the size of your household. And as we speak to residents about it, we make sure that they're eligible and that they're interested, and then we calculate what portion of the solar farm is appropriate for them. So, like I said, I'm giving a second public information session tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, at the library. And what I want to do right now is to see if anyone has any questions or concerns about the work that we're doing, and make sure I address those.
I have a question.
Yes.
You talk about the low to moderate income. Can you give me a range of what that means? How does your company define that?
Yeah, so it is defined by 80% of, 80% or below, of the state's median household income. And that's actually defined by how many people are in your household. So, there's three examples here. If you have a household of four, it's less than or equal to $71,900. That's what counts as moderate income and would qualify for this program. A single resident or a household of one, it's less than $50,000. So, we speak to residents about that to see if you fall under one of those criteria. We are not asking for tax returns or any private information to confirm that. We feel like that's an invasion of privacy and would be a penalty for having to prove that you're eligible with all that paperwork. So, right now, it's a verbal confirmation. And the Public Service Commission hasn't set any particular rules around verifying this. We've suggested different options, like just an affidavit, but right now, verbal confirmation is really all we need.
Where would you be again?
So, tomorrow, 6:00 PM, at the Wycomico Public Library, Room 1.
I spoke on the phone about Amanda Polling. I believe you said renters.
Hi, Amanda.
Can someone who's renting the house be eligible?
Yes, yes. Anyone with a Delmarva Power Utility Bill. So, we don't, this isn't about owning your home and putting any equipment on your home. It's just as long as you pay an electric bill, you can participate.
Any other questions? Again, it's tomorrow night at the library, Room 1.
Yes, thank you. I should have made a slide for that.
We can get it. I think the week, I'll ask the man behind the curtain to maybe put it up on the, because this is being broadcast.
Okay, great. There was a letter sent out, but yes, also for anyone who wants to jot that down right now, 6:00 PM, at the downtown library tomorrow night. Thank you so much.
You can leave it. You can leave it. That's fine. Or just turn it off. Either one. Leave it. Leave it. We'll take care of it. It's nice looking. Blue sky. Okay. Sorry for the mix-up. We have a motion by Ms. Blake, I believe. And, yes, and we need a second to that motion for the consent agenda. Mr. Boda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I guess we better be official about it. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the March 4, 2019 closed session minutes, the March 11, 2019 regular meeting minutes, the March 18, 2019 work session minutes, Resolution Number 2929 declaring that APPI Energy and 112 Market Street LLC are eligible to receive enterprise zoom benefits for property located at 112 East Market Street. Resolution Number 2930 declaring that 112 East Market Street LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zoom benefits for their property located at 120 East Market Street. Resolution Number 2931 approving the appointment of William Knopf to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending April 2022. And Resolution Number 2932 approving the reappointment of Charles Sims to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending April 2022. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If Mr. Knopf or Mr. Sims is here, please stand to be recognized. Either one is here. We thank them for volunteering and for their service. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to award the bids. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtin. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols. This is Miller.
Miller.
I'm struggling tonight.
Yes, he is.
Just give me a few minutes. I'm sure I'll trip over a few words. Good evening, everybody. We have a few items on the award of bids for this evening, the first being the award of bid for RFP 19-110 Main Street Master Plan Phases 1 and 3 Construction. Trips me up every time. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals for RFP 19-110 Main Street Master Plan Phases 1 and 3 Construction. The scope of work for this solicitation called for a qualified contractor who will furnish all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for the remaining revitalization of Main Street, the plaza, and a portion of North Division Street. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, utilizing the city's vendor list, and posting on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. One vendor submitted a bid by the due date and time of March 21, 2019, at 2:30 PM. That was George &amp; Lynch Incorporated with a total bid of $4,613,860. George &amp; Lynch was deemed qualified and responsible according to the technical evaluation criteria specified in the solicitation document, which prompted the opening of the price proposal. Section 2.32.050.C, .1, .D. Compete, procedure for competitive bidding of the Salisbury Code of Ordinances states that in the event that only one responsible bidder has submitted a responsive bid, the procurement may be negotiated with the sole bidder. The Department of Infrastructure and Development worked with the contractor to resolve proposed costs and refine specification assumptions, resulting in a negotiated initial contract value of $5,100,000. Funds are available in the two accounts noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement concurs with the recommendations submitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and thereby requests council's approval to award this contract to George &amp; Lynch Incorporated in the amount of $5,100,000.
Any questions or comments?
Just yea.
Oh, yea. I thought you said nay.
I'm the one who had the original pictures in his office all the way back in the day, so this is...
It's been a while coming.
...start hammering you in the lounge, so I can see it happen. Thank you so much for your work, and thank you so much for your work.
You're welcome. The next item. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number 1 in the amount of $846,303.52 for invitation to bid 125-18. That's Main Street Block 3 and the Riverwalk Landscape Architecture. As stated in the award of bid memo to council on June 4, 2018, a copy of which I did put in your packet, additional work based on the original scope desired would be awarded via change order as funding became available in FY '19. This change order would provide for deferred items such as paver crosswalks, curb gutter and sidewalk, landscaping, roadway signs, pavement striping, uplighting, site furnishing, and a water main realignment. Funds are available in the three accounts that I noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to process change order number 1 to George &amp; Lynch Incorporated in the amount noted above.
Any questions or comments?
The next item is an award of bid for RFP 19-113. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit proposals for RFP 19-113. That's the Construction, Administration, and Inspection Services for Main Street Master Plan Phases 1 and 3. The Department of Procurement followed standard solicitation practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting on the city of Salisbury procurement portal, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. Three vendors submitted proposals by the due date and time of March 21, 2019, at 2:30 PM. All vendors were determined to be responsive and responsible, and the technical proposals were evaluated according to the criteria established in the solicitation document. That information is noted on the departmental memo, which is attached in your packet. All vendors were deemed qualified, meaning they achieved 75% of the maximum technical points, and the Department of Procurement proceeded in opening the price proposals for each vendor. In your packet are the composite scores and the total proposed prices for each vendor. The Department of Procurement concurs with the award recommendations submitted by the Department of Infrastructure and Development, and thereby requests council's approval to award a contract to GHD Incorporated in the amount of $326,589. Funds are confirmed as available in the Main Street Master Plan Engineering and Architectural Project account noted in your packet.
Any questions or comments?
Last item this evening. The Department of Procurement received a surplus request from the Parking Division of Field Operations to declare a 2003 Ford Focus as surplus. This vehicle is over 15 years old, and while it does have low mileage, the vehicle is in poor condition and is in need of frequent repairs. Vehicle identification information is on the attached departmental memo. Upon declaration of surplus as approved by council, the Department of Procurement will attempt to sell the vehicles via an auction sale. If unsellable through this service, it will be sold locally as salvage.
Questions or comments?
Will that come back to their departments?
Not usually. It usually just goes back into the general fund.
The Police Department always puts those back. And this Korykovsky always, everything she sells manages to get back into her department. Will you please ask them if they'd let you back?
I sure will.
I mean, we went from $5 million to $500, but still.
I'll ask.
Thank you, Mr. Irtin. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Okay. We have three public hearings tonight. And what we're going to do to try to save a little bit of time is, anyone who would like to speak in any of those three hearings, please stand, and you'll be sworn in by the clerk.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
And for purpose of order, I would just like to talk about the format for a second. Anyone who wishes to speak, because we have discussed these during the work sessions at least three or four times, if I remember, you'll have four minutes to make any comments relative to the vote. Okay? Okay, first up, I'll call for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2914. Mr. Irtin? What? You did?
No, yeah. I just need to, I need to speak up. Sometimes I get a little soft. Yeah, it does say speak up.
Yeah, because I didn't hear you either.
It does.
We apologize. We have notes to follow. Speak in, microphone, speak up. Okay.
Resolution Number 2914 as amended. A resolution of the city of Salisbury pursuant to the authority of Article 11-E Constitution of the State of Maryland in Section 4-301 et sec., subtitle 3, Title 4, Division 2, and Section 4-401 et sec., Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending its corporate limits as required in its charter SC 1-2, which covers the descriptions of the lands that make up the city to correct an inadvertent property description involving a parcel of land owned by Kevin Leonard Smith Jr., which included in a prior annexation near Queen Avenue and West Road. Whereas the city of Salisbury expands its corporate limits to accordance with the state of Maryland required annexation procedures when it passed and approved Resolution Number 1447, which was subsequently filed by the state of Maryland and which annexed real property located on the northeast side of Queen Avenue and westerly side of West Road, including a portion of West Road and Queen Avenue. Said parcel having been contiguous to and binding upon the westerly corporate limit of the city of Salisbury. And whereas, in accordance with Section 4-301 et sec. of the Local Government Article Annotated Code of Maryland, the city of Salisbury is required pursuant to its charter SC 1-2 to include a description of its annexed land completed in accordance with Section 4-401 et sec. of the Local Government Article Annotated Code of Maryland. And whereas the city passed adoption of Resolution Number 1447 and the subsequent annexed lands became effective on or about January 25, 2007. And whereas Resolution Number 1447 contained a property description that inadvertently included a property which was then owned by Daniel W. Corbin, which was not to have been included in the annexation property description. And whereas the affected parcel of the property was subsequently acquired by Kevin Leonard Smith Jr. from Ballmer Properties LLC by deed dated March 20, 2018, and subsequently recorded in the Land Records for Wycomico County, Maryland, and LIBER MSB Number 4302, Folio 282, having a property address of 1410 West Road, Salisbury, Maryland 2181. And whereas the incorrect meets and bounds description, which included the property as recently discovered and that there have been no municipal services provided to that property, after the resolution of, after the adoption of Resolution Number 1447 and the property owner desires the inadvertent error to be corrected, which requires a revised city boundary description. And whereas the property inadvertently included in the prior annexation property description was at the time of the annexation owned by Daniel W. Corbin, District 09, Property Tax ID Number 036423, MAP 29, Parcel 334, deed reference LIBER 2950, Folio 0389, being Lot Number 1, Block Q, and a parcel of the land 145 feet, and with and extending back from said Lot Number 1, Block Q, from a distance of 230 feet, as shown and designated on a plot of West Side Manor, Section Number 1, made for Chandler and Carey by G.F. Schaefer, RS., dated June 1916, and recorded among the Land Records of Wycomico County, Maryland, and LIBER JWTS Number 486, Folio 11, subject to and together with a certain 10-foot easement described in the deed from Chandler and Carey Incorporated at Al to Lola M. White, at Al dated August 15, 1962, and recorded among the Land Records for Wycomico County, Maryland, and LIBER JWTS Number 551, Folio 308, the improvements thereon being known as 410 West Road, Salisbury, Maryland 2181. And whereas the city of Salisbury received a petition from Kevin Leonard Smith Jr. on December 28, 2018, Exhibit 1, and an amended petition signed by him on April 4, 2019, to correctly identify the parcel number as 334, Exhibit 1, amended petition, requesting the corrections to be made pertaining to the here-and-after described parcel of the land that was previously included in the annexation property described in Resolution Number 1447, since it is not to have been included in annexation. And whereas Leslie C. Sherrill surveyed the city of Salisbury, prepared and reviewed the corrected meets and bounds description, and whereas it appears... and whereas it appears that all their requirements of applicable law have been met, and whereas the City of Salisbury consents to the corrections and has confirmed that the current petitioner is a valid owner of the affected property. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury that the Charter description pertaining to the city's property boundaries shall be amended to correct the prior meets and bounds description contained in resolution number 1447, which shall be replaced with the correct meets and bounds and description contained in Exhibit A, and the next section, line 62 to 97, re-describes in legal description what I just previously identified. So skipping ahead to line 98, be it further resolved that a public hearing is scheduled for April 8th, 2009 at 6:00 PM, and be it further resolved that the zoning map of the City of Salisbury shall be amended to address the correction tied to the aforementioned parcel of property which will revise, which will revise the city's municipal boundaries, and be it further resolved that the council hold a public hearing on the correction of the prior annexation property description hereby proposed on April 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at the City County Office Building, and the City Manusulator so calls a public notice of the time and be placed on said hearing to be published not fewer than two times at no less than two weekly intervals, no less than weekly intervals in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which said not, what said notice shall specify a time and place at which the county, the City of Salisbury, will hold a public hearing on the resolution, which date shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication specified above, and, one more. Be it further resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury that this resolution shall take effect upon the expiration of the 45 days following its final passage, subject however to the right of referendum as contained in the Local Government Article of the Maryland Code.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to amend the original document as read.
I'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Boda?
I'll second. Just in case you didn't hear me.
Ms. Blake definitely missed second to that. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any questions on the amended motion? I just have one comment. This reminds me of my father when he said, "Measure twice, cut once." Well, I think this will handle it, so, right. Amanda's giving me the yes. Okay. All right, we'll now call the motion. Oh, first, we'll now open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this, you're welcome to do so. Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing, and I'll now call for the vote on resolution 2914 as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Kittra. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution 2927.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda?
Resolution number 2927. A resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Route 13 North, PennTex II Property Annexation, the southerly boundary of which begins at a point on the corporate limit, said point at the line intersection of the easterly right-of-way line of US Route 13, North Salisbury Boulevard, and the northerly boundary line of the lands of PTVI LLC, thence running in the easterly direction by and with the northerly line of the lands of PTVI LLC. Whereas the City of Salisbury has received a petition to annex dated May 25th, 2018, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters, and of the persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed valuation of the real property sought to be annexed, and whereas the said property is binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as Route 13 North, PennTex II Property Annexation, the southerly boundary of which begins at a point on the corporate limit, said point line at the intersection of the easterly right-of-way line of US Route 13, North Salisbury Boulevard, and the northerly boundary line of the lands of PTVI LLC, thence running in the easterly direction by and with the northerly line of the lands of PTVI LLC, and whereas the City of Salisbury has caused to be made a certification of the signatures on the said petition for annexation, has verified that the persons signing the petition represent at least 25% of the persons who are eligible voters and the property owners owning 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area to be annexed, all as of June 19, 2018, and as more particular appears by the certification of Leslie C. Sherrill Survey of the City of Salisbury attached hereto, and whereas the petition dated May 25th, 2018, meet all the requirements of an applicable law, and whereas the public hearing required by law is scheduled for April 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury that the boundaries of the City of Salisbury be changed so as to annex to and include within the city all the parcel of land together with the persons residing therein, and their property contiguous to and binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury, the southerly boundary of which begins at the point on the corporate limit, said point line at the intersections of the easterly right-of-way line of US Route 13, North Salisbury Boulevard, and the northerly boundary line of the lands of PTVI LLC, thence running in the easterly direction by and with the northerly line of the lands of PTVI LLC, and being more particular described as Exhibit A attached hereto and made part of, part hereof, and be it further resolved by the City of Salisbury that the annexation of the said area be made subject to the terms, conditions, and agreements in Exhibits A through C attached hereto and made part hereof, and be it further resolved by the City of Salisbury that the zoning map of the City of Salisbury be shall, shall be amended to include the newly annexed property in the general commercial zoning district, said property is presently classified as C2 General Commercial District under the zoning laws of Wycomica County, and be it further resolved by the City of Salisbury that the council hold a public hearing on the annexation hereby proposed on April 8th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at the City County Office Building, and the City Manusulator so calls a public notice of the time and place of said hearing to be published not fewer than two times at not less than weekly intervals in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which said notice shall specify a time and place at which the council of the City of Salisbury will hold a public hearing on the resolution, which date shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of the publication specified above, and be it further resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury that this resolution shall take effect upon the expiration of 45 days following its final passage, subject however to the right of referendum as contained in the Local Government Article of the Maryland Code.
Thank you, Mr. Kittra. I'll now open the public hearing on resolution number 2927. Anybody who would like to speak, please go to the podium, and you have four minutes from the time you begin.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Harmon with Becker Morgan Group, representing developer. I'll keep it short. You guys have all heard the project before. I just want to thank the neighbors, actually, for being part of the process. We've met with them several times. The project has become better than what it would have been had it been developed in the county, bringing this into the city, annexing it, bringing public utilities. This is all going to be a betterment for the community, the additional landscaping, the thought that has been put into the layout of the site. We believe that this is going to be a superior project as to what it may have been otherwise had it remained in the county and been developed under the commercial zoning that was currently there. So I just wanted to point out that fact and thank the neighbors for their input, and we've gone to great lengths to try and address their concerns, so that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Connie Rue. My husband John and I live at 30448 Danwood Drive, Delmar, Maryland. It's a community on Leonard's Mill Pond. In January, I spoke briefly about some environmental concerns that my family and I have about this building project, and was gratified to know that you gave it some more time to think about the environmental impact of the project that's supposed to go forward. On April 1st, we delivered a letter and some attachments to the city council members, and I'd like to know if that could be entered into and made a part of the record of this proceeding this evening?
It will be part of the record.
Okay. Thank you. I was, since the January meeting, I've done a little bit of research about Wycomico County's comprehensive plan for sensitive areas, and we do consider Leonard's Mill Pond and the whole system of ponds in Wycomico County to be sensitive areas in terms of the ecosystems and the flora and fauna that inhabit the sensitive areas. And in their own words, the county comprehensive plan put forth a very fine narrative about recognizing the intrinsic value of these natural resources in Wycomico County, and that the residents be engaged in numerous regulatory, governmental, and private efforts to protect the environment. Now, it doesn't preclude economic development, of course, but we'd like to ensure that new development and redevelopment minimizes pollutant loadings and runoff from sites through implementing sediment, stormwater, and erosion control plans and practices. And on the last page of the, of Chapter Four, Sensitive Areas, chapter in the Wycomico Comprehensive Plan, they state, "The deterioration of sensitive areas does not only occur by development activities on-site, but also by the increase of impervious surface, water runoff, and non-point source pollution elsewhere in the watershed. In addition to regulating and controlling growth on the sensitive areas and its fringes, a comprehensive approach is necessary to guide all new development and have minimum impact on the natural resources." Now, when we looked at the plan, it looked as though there would be clear cutting up to the edge of the water, and indeed a pier that would go over, over the pond where people could dine and look at the, look at the water. What we would hope you would consider is providing an easement in perpetuity, a tree line of some sort to filter the runoff from the parking lots of those two restaurants that are meant to be built there. I don't know if that's part of your discussion or part of your plan. I know it would, it would sort of impede the view from the restaurant onto the pond, but we really do need to consider the health of that whole ecosystem as we go forward with this. If I have any extra time, I'd yield it to the next person.
Yeah, 50, yeah, 50 seconds.
I'll yield that to Steve if that's all right. Should I present this?
Well, I think, give it to the clerk. I think she has a copy already, though. We gave it to her.
It'll be included with the minutes.
Mr. President and council members, Mr. Tillman and Madam Clerk, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to be here today. My name is John Rue. I am Connie's husband, and we live on Leonard Mill Pond, have lived there for the last seven years, and I'm not going to spend any more time talking about what we have presented as our testimony here tonight that's been introduced into evidence as what we've testified to and also the exhibits, and we appreciate and know that you all have paid attention to that. Briefly, I'd just like to state, when we talk about a perpetual easement, there is precedent in this county and in this city for a perpetual easement. When the Clermont Village was developed back in the early '30s by the Booth Brothers, Clermont, north-south Clermont was one horseshoe-shaped drive. When the Clermont Center was proposed, the city made as part of the development process a perpetual easement that was a brick wall that ran the distance from Lor crop all the way to College Avenue. And when you go there today, that brick wall is probably eight to 10 feet high and runs the entire length. We lived in Clermont for some 30 years, and you could not hear any noise, could not hear any light or any other type of pollution coming through there. The powers-to-be that owned it at some point in time when we were living there decided they would knock some holes in the back of the wall so they could start delivering goods to the stores. And at the time, Mary and Morton lived there, and a couple of calls were made, and within 10 days or two weeks, all of the holes were fixed, repaired, and to this day, that easement is there. We certainly hold PennTex for their word and know that what they say, their word is their bond, but a perpetual easement, which you all have the power to order as part of this development process, would run with the land and would be a barrier that would enhance the value of the PennTex property, also for the folks that live across that way, would keep them from a harsh view of commercial development. Some of those people lived there for 30 years, and they've had a peaceful scenic view. They may not have that anymore, and it would ensure, more importantly, if that vegetation was, was in place and stayed in place, that a natural filter would occur. You know, we're having these storms and these events now that are coming every year with runoff, and I don't really need to tell you anymore about how, how that is affecting our waterways. So I would ask you to give serious consideration to creating a perpetual easement so that a buffer could be established and would protect the residents, the environment, and the future, and would ensure the future that Leonard Mill Pond would remain the crown jewel of Wycomico County. And I will yield the balance of my time, Mr. President, to Mr. Brewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
My name's Steve Brewer. I live at 30507 Danwood Drive, resident of Leonard's Mill Pond, and I want to thank the council once again for allowing us to speak, also PennTex for meeting with us. And I cannot stand to read things, but for the sake of time, I'm going to read some stuff. But first, I want to just say this. The essence of what I want to talk to you about right now may have no bearing on this project at this point, although it's about this project, but it has to do with process and due diligence. And every time I've talked with you all, what I've stressed is due diligence for the best outcome for all the people. What I learned in my previous professional career was that process and procedures are important to ensure consistent outcomes. So I want to talk for just a couple of minutes about some things that I want you to consider as you go through this process with this, even with this development, but with others in the future. PennTex said to me, representative from PennTex said to me near the beginning of the outset, that they had invested a lot of money, which they have, and they wouldn't have invested that money if they didn't have intentions of doing a good project. So I heard that. I also heard people locally in government and other places say to me, "Look, they, the developers put a lot of money into this, and they're going to have a good outcome." What no one has asked me is what's the investment of the constituents, of the people that live around that pond? So I'm going to give you a snapshot. I don't have the exact figures, but there are about 62 homes on the waterfront around that pond. The real estate values probably average at the minimum 250,000 to 400,000 plus. If you do some quick math and you take a low average of $275,000 a house and you sold them, that's a little over $17 million. I don't know what PennTex has invested. I'm not sure that it's $17 million. They are going to be able to sell their product and take their profit. That's what they do. I have no animosity towards PennTex whatsoever. That's, that's their job. If you take the same 62 houses and you look at a $3,000 a year property tax, that's $186,000 of perpetual income going into the county coffers year by year. It would have been nice, or it would be nice, if when you compare those numbers and you start looking at what the constituents and the citizens of the county have involved, compared to what perhaps the developer has involved, maybe more time and opportunity for sharing with the county council in face-to-face instead of four minutes, so that we could have an honest have an honest discussion about these things, and it would give a better outcome for everyone. There's a lot of angst that's occurred with PennTex, I'm sure, with us, because we're going through this process, and it, a lot of it was probably needless if we could have had the time to sit down, as they have had, which I understand that, but you all could have also tapped into some people who have a lot of expertise and knowledge in the process. I just want to refer you to something as you go through this, and it may come up with the Planning and Zoning Commission. That is county zoning regulations 225-45, and it has to do with new development and, and the Paleo Channel and the Overlay District. And one of the things that it talks about in that is, in section 49 on the comprehensive plan, it says, in the steep slopes piece, "The city of Salisbury prohibits new development on slopes greater than 15 degrees." I don't know if you all have had to deal with that at this point. I think the slope there is over 15 degrees. There's also discussions about stream, intermittent and otherwise. I don't know if you all are aware of it. I don't know if anybody in, in infrastructure is aware of it, but if you open the gates on that pond and you drain it, you will find that it is spring-fed and there is a stream that continues to run into Leonard's Mill Run, which is part of the green corridor, or actually, it's part of a green hub. If you'll just give me a minute, I'll, I'll try to finish up, Mr. President. Not only is it part of the Paleo Channel, it's also a mapped green corridor. And in your comprehensive plan, you talk about the green hubs and the green corridors and the significance of them. And I think that that all needs to be discussed as part of the overall development plan. A question that I have, and it's just a procedural thing, and folks, please, don't misunderstand me. I have no animosity. I, I'm not, I learned also in my other life, business is business and friendship is friendship, and we ought to be able to disagree and get up and go have doughnuts and coffee. So don't take anything offensively that I'm saying or that I'm going to ask. In, on the Salisbury City website, there is a list of annexation procedures. I have a question about them. 16 says, and that's where we are right now, "The city council conducts a public hearing and a second reading of the proposed annexation," which we just did. "During this public hearing, the city council will establish a date for the adoption of the annexation request." 17 then says, "The city council meets to vote on the decision to approve the annexation of the property." I know the plan, I think, is to do that vote tonight. I don't know, and it's just a question, you don't have to answer it now, but it seems to me, as a layperson, not a lawyer reading that, that there's another step in there. It's not going to change the outcome, but I throw that out as, again, a procedural and process concern. In the future, I'll close with this, and there are a lot of other questions I have, but we just aren't going to get to them. In the future, I would suggest, humbly, that the council hold a work session with the residents that are being impacted by development and recognize that there are citizens and constituents with vast areas of knowledge that can be helpful in facilitating great outcomes. You're missing a golden opportunity. I learned that in my other life as well. Afford the discovery process honest face-to-face discussions. We're not having a discussion right now. You're listening to me. With the citizenry as well as with the developer.
Could you, you have, could you just finish up? Because you got, you're over three minutes already.
Many of the issues discussed tonight could have been resolved by such a process with much less angst by everyone. There's no substitute for thorough due diligence, cross the Ts, dot the Is, compromise and look for a win-win, and at the very least, a perpetual easement that Mr. Rue talked about, to maintain the biological sound and visual screens regardless of ownership, would constitute a first step in that direction. And I appreciate your indulgence, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you to PennTex for sitting down with us. That was, it was very nice.
Just for the record, I'd like to point out that we did have at least four work sessions? Three or four work sessions at least where the public was invited?
Maybe we should keep that sort of...
No, I'm just making a point. You had, you had your point. I'm just saying that we had work sessions, that we listened. And PennTex, that's why we delayed the process, so that PennTex could resolve some of those issues, like the easement situation. And they have committed to the fact that they're going to put the high bushes, the entire length, which will be a sound deadening and also a visual barrier. So I, I think that, just to make sure everyone knows at home knows, that we did have open work sessions and the public was invited and people were allowed to speak and there was no time limit on it. We just went and, and listened, okay? So just for the record, I want, I want to make sure that I point that out. Any other comments from the...
I just, I want to say, I appreciate the Rue's comments. When I ran for mayor in 2009, I was accused of, I was going to tear it down so that they could build a drive-through for the, the CVS that was there. That was, the first day I filed for office, I found out that someone was walking around Claremont going, "Irton's going to tear it down." For those of us that didn't get a wall, though, and deal with most of Route 13 where we live, it's necessary in some, in some venues, not at the national level, obviously, but I would, to Mrs. Rue, I'm not exactly sure, even as, even 40 years ago when I swam in Leonard's Mill, that it wasn't doomed then, between the runoff of the farms in Delaware and the farms to the east, to the septic systems and to the geese that were there and everything that you have tried to do to protect and, and all the things you obviously have learned and come across and the things going underneath are remarkable. I'm going to vote no, as I have previously on it. The only council person in the history of Salisbury that probably voted no for residents to live outside his district and in another town, but I, I, I think it's important for us to realize that during this process, it's, well, the state said this is okay and the county said this is okay. Nobody said anything nationally. I'm going to be the one, when you're backed up in traffic on Daggsborough Road, who gets the call. If you're smart, and I'm hoping, and I know all of you are, but you'll remember when they dumped the dumpster, to call someone else. We have gotten into this position, I think, in this town that just says, "Oh, wow, well, you know, it's the way it's, the way it's always been." And it always seems when citizens come into this process, it's always someone going, "Well, the state okayed it." And, and that is designed to keep you silent, that is designed to keep you saying, "Oh, well, they're going to do what they're going to do." And even after serving here and serving there for now, close to, I don't know, it seems like 100 years, I still don't know who the "they" is that controls this. So I want to applaud you and your efforts because what you're protecting there, it reminds me of the annex, what's going to happen down by the university and all the houses that are going to sit on Pine Bluff Road, which are the crown jewel of Wycomico County collecting property taxes. And that's not in the city limits. There I am talking about it again. They're going to put something there that is going to decrease that property value for the sake of everybody going along to get along. And that's exactly what's happened. So I applaud you and I applaud your effort. I applaud PennTex for working with you. There's not going to be a way we're going to agree. It's, the system has decided that this type of growth is going to happen, whether you like it and I like it or not. So congratulations on your effort.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I just have a question, if you don't mind. I, I have a question. In the documents that I'm reading, in there, they did talk about how PennTex was going to take care of waste. And there was something in there about this independent waste hauler. I just wanted to know exactly what that meant. In one of the permits or one of the documents, you know, really spelling out everything you were doing, including...
We can get an answer. Yeah.
An independent waste hauler is a private trash company, basically. In the city of Salisbury, they don't pick up commercial garbage, they just do residential. So in order to remove the trash, they're going to hire somebody to come in and take the trash out so that the city doesn't have to do that.
Okay. And two other things. I did speak to Ms. Rue earlier today, and I just wanted to clarify two things for, for myself going forward. Is there going to be any cutting of this 100-foot forest buffer? There is, there's some understanding, there might be some cutting of some trees in that area. Is that accurate or not?
So there's a, currently, there's a 25-foot wide embankment that's there. It's where you come from the pond level up to the top where it flattens out. The area on that slope, all of the mature trees are going to stay there. There's a few trees that are dying, that the, the ones that are dying will be removed. And a lot of the undergrowth that's like briars and things, that'll be cleaned up so that we can make room for all of the new landscaping that we're putting in there. And there's also new trees that are going to be planted in that slope area so that we can enhance that landscape area. The trees that are up on the site, there's some tall pine trees that are there. Those trees are in the way of the parking lot in the building, so those trees will have to be cut down. But all of the mature trees that are in good health will remain on the bank that's there.
And I think one other thing I want to ask, in regards to drainage, I think this was explained by a couple of different people. Can you clarify the drainage from the parking lot? Do you have some type of containers so they don't filter into the pond?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
All of the runoff from the new buildings and the new parking will run away from the pond. And part of the site will go to a bio-retention facility that's up by Route 13. And bio-retention is where we put special planting soil in and plant plants inside of it, and the water filters through that and absorbs into the ground, and the plants uptake the nitrogen and phosphorus. It's what comes through the rainfall from, you know, chemicals in the air and also runoff from the parking lot and all those things. So it gets filtered through that bio-retention. There is also a large underground stormwater filter system that are plastic chambers that are underneath the parking lot. That will handle the rest of the site and the water will run into a filter row that captures all of the debris that runs off of a parking lot. So cigarette butts and papers and cups and anything that's like that will be trapped underground. Once a year, the owner will be required to go in there with a vacuum truck and vacuum all that out and take that to a landfill. So none of that stuff will run off into the pond, it will all be captured. And then the water will infiltrate into the ground. During the two and 10-year storm events, and I know I'm kind of getting into the weeds a little bit on technical stuff, but the city has a requirement that we reduce the runoff in those storm events. We are actually eliminating runoff in the two and the 10-year storm events, so no water runs into the pond. It's all held within our infiltration system and it will be recharged back into the ground rather than going into the pond. In the 100-year storm, we have a very significant decrease in runoff. And, and I'm going to use round numbers because I don't remember the exact ones, but if the runoff was 10 cubic feet per second pre-development, it's going to be reduced to something like 2 cubic foot per second in the 100-year storm. So only in the very largest storms that we get are we even going to see any runoff from the site. The rest of it's being managed underground.
Is there any...
Thank you.
Any thought from council members about discussing a perpetual easement?
I, I don't, I don't have any reason to do.
I don't, I didn't want to make a motion tabled or anything unless I thought there was... I'm not exactly sure what that means. I know they don't want a wall like a Claremont.
Right.
You know?
And it, it does sound like, and I did read in, in all the documents here, that you were going to put up this shrubbery...
There's a solid hedge that's going to be at least six-foot tall when planted, that will grow to be taller than that. That will be all along the entire length of the parking that's between the two buildings and the drive-through that runs next to the front restaurant. And it will extend all the way until it goes past where the, the trash collection is going to be. So they'll have that solid hedge and then there's, I don't want to say hundreds, but I'm going to say dozens at least of other trees and shrubs and plants. I don't remember the count off the top of my head. But in addition to that solid hedge, there's going to be a lot more plants planted amongst the trees that are out there to create a natural embankment so that you see a vegetated bank and, and not just dirt and some trees there. So it will be fully landscaped.
Any further questions? At this point, then, I'll close the public hearing. And I will call the motion. Will those in favor of resolution number 2927 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And the chair opposed?
Nay.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is for one. I'll adjourn the motion to approve resolution number 2928.
The move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda, Mr. Kitzro.
Resolution number 2928, a resolution of the city of Salisbury to adopt an annexation plan for a certain area of laying contiguous to and binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the city of Salisbury to be known as the Route 13 North PennTex II property annexation, the southerly boundary of which begins at a point on the said corporate limit, said point line at the intersection of the easterly right-of-way line of US Route 13 North Salisbury Boulevard and the northerly boundary line of the lands of PTVI LLC, thence running in an easterly direction by and with the northerly line of the lands of PTVI LLC. Whereas the city of Salisbury considering the annexation of a parcel of laying contiguous to and binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the city of Salisbury, the southerly boundary of which begins at a point on the said corporate limit and said point line at the intersection of the easterly right-of-way line of US Route 13 North Salisbury Boulevard and the northerly boundary line of the lands of PTVI LLC, thence running in an easterly direction by and with the northerly line of the plans of PTVI LLC, and being more particularly described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part hereof. And whereas the city of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed area of the annexation pursuant to the local government article of Maryland code, Maryland annotated code. And whereas the public hearing required by law is scheduled for April 8, 2019 at 6:00 PM, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, that an annexation plan for the Route 13 North PennTex II property annexation is set forth in Exhibit B attached hereto and made a part hereof is adopted for the area of the land located and binding upon the northerly corporate limit of the city of Salisbury, the southerly boundary of the which begins at the point on the said corporate limit, said point line at the intersection of the easterly right-of-way line of US Route 13 North Salisbury Boulevard, the northerly boundary line of the lands of PTVI LLC, thence running in the easterly direction by and with the northerly line of the lands of PTV One LLC, and being more particularly described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made part hereof, said parcel being contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limit of the city of Salisbury. And be it further resolved by the city of Salisbury that the council hold a public hearing on the annexation plan hereby proposed on April 8, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the council chamber at the city county office building. And the city administrator so calls a public notice of time and place of said hearing to be published, not fewer than two times, not, at not less than one weekly intervals. And a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Salisbury would said notice shall specify a time and place at which the council of the city of Salisbury will hold a public hearing on the resolution.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to speak?
Hi, my name's John Rue again, and I guess my question is, the annexation procedures provide for a hearing to be held, I read it as a later date. Is it, is it the intent of the council tonight to bypass the annexation procedures and vote on the plan tonight and therefore the 45-day rule will start, will start to run? Mr. Tillman, can you speak to that?
Mr. Tillman, can you weigh in?
Yeah, the public hearing is tonight, and the vote is tonight.
Well, my question is that, that is in contradiction to what the annexation procedure calls for, because it says at the public hearing, the hearing that we just had, you would set a date for a subsequent public hearing to consider this, but you're considering the same time, is that correct?
Only one public hearing is required.
It doesn't say that in your, in your annexation procedures when you look at numbers 16 and 17.
The, this, this is done pursuant to state law.
Well, I'm just looking at what your procedures are, sir.
Yeah, I know.
And I just think, I just think... And I just think, I just think that, you know, the layperson that looks at this has to rely on what's out there. And, and the only other thing I'd like to say is, uh, I understand the four-minute rule, Mr. Heath. I think that all of the citizens that come before this agency and anybody else has a First Amendment right to freedom of speech and also freedom of petition. And I believe that your four-minute rule that you stand by violates our rights to come forward and speak freely. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll close the public hearing then. And I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Two-Nine-Two-Eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Measure passes four to one. I'll adjourn the motion to approve Resolution Two-Nine-Three-Three.
Second.
Mr. Irtan, Mr. Boda.
Mr. Kitro.
Resolution Number Two-Nine-Three-Three, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, in opposition to offshore seismic testing and drilling for oil and gas. Whereas the City of Salisbury, Maryland was designated a sustainable Maryland community in two thousand and sixteen, and whereas scientific study has proven that seismic airgun blasting to explore for oil and gas deposits disrupts and displaces marine life and threatens our coastal wetlands in Maryland, which are, of intrinsic ecological value for numerous diverse species, serve as an essential nursery habitats for recreational and commercially important fisheries, and act as a natural buffers for storm surges and hurricanes. And whereas offshore oil and gas drilling and exploration places coastal communities at economic and ecological risk from oil spills and the pollution brought by routine drilling operations and onshore industrialization, threatening the livelihoods of commercial and recreational fishermen and small businesses that rely on a clean and healthy ocean and beaches for thriving tourism industry. And whereas offshore drilling may require significant offshore infrastructure, such as pipelines and refineries, which we harm, which would harm the character of the Maryland's coastline, perpetuate our ties to carbon pollution and exacerbate wetland losses, storm surge and sea level rises, rise impacts. And whereas tourism, as related to the appreciation of our... All right, I'm done.
Sorry. You stay there. We're still on, gentlemen, Mr. Rue's time.
And whereas the City of Salisbury, Maryland endeavors to be a good steward of the state's environmental and its resources, and now therefore be resolved by the Salisbury City Council that the city opposes offshore oil and gas drilling and the exploration activities, including airgun blasting in the mid-Atlantic ocean adjacent to Maryland's coastline. And be it further resolved by the Salisbury City Council that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Governor, Maryland's First Congressional District House, and Senate delegations to the One-Sixteenth Congress, the President of the Maryland Senate, and the Maryland House Speaker.
Any questions or comments?
There has to be a, and I'll figure it out over the next week and send you all an email, but there has to be a connection between what we're doing here and what just happened. There has, and I don't know what the connection is yet, but I worry that it's okay to be an environmentalist for that stuff over there. I'll share as soon as I can put them into paragraph form, I'll do that with you.
I would like to formally disagree with you.
I understand.
Because, because, no, I'm serious.
Yeah.
Um, the, the environmental plan that they came up with for that site is probably the best one that's in Salisbury right now.
I would say to you, as I mentioned to, to the councilwoman to my left, drive up into the Coles parking lot and tell me, tell me what this city has ever done, me included. I will take, I will take partial blame for it. That trash is still going to end up in that water. That trash is all over those woods at the end of the Coles parking lot. And it comes, I, I, I believe that PennTex, and I think... Can you give me the sheet that you and I wrote to one another? PennTex did what they were supposed to do. But what they did was the least they needed to do.
Is that an engineering, is that an engineering opinion?
We drive around other places and we see what is expected, especially where wealthy people live, what is expected of developers to build there. And all of the things that are done across the state. And we get here, and this isn't, this isn't our fault. I, I have asked the mayor repeatedly, where is it that the ball gets dropped that we don't get what other people get? Because we have driven past beautiful places. This, this is gonna, this is gonna go, and it'll probably look fine, but there were so many more opportunities, not from our standpoint, because ours is a legislative standpoint, but from the other side, from the people who were doing. I, I want the rules that govern these departments to demand more for us, and they don't.
Well, you had that opportunity for five years.
Yes, I did. And I would like to tell you that had my relationship with the Council that this mayor has was the same, it would have been perfect. Uh, that hence my happiness at the Main Street master plan earlier today, getting done. I, I just, I to, I believe that, that, that particular pond was gone a long time ago. And the fact that we all swam in it and still have ten fingers and ten toes is truly amazing.
Yeah, it's been gone.
It is.
Well, I mean, if we, if, even with sitting there right now at that, at, at the pond, and we just leave it, all that runoff from the highway, from the site, goes into the pond now.
The current site.
What they're going to put in there is going to reduce what's coming off the highway through that property, because it's going to go into their system. That's what they said at that one meeting.
I, I agree with you.
So, I mean, environmentally, I mean, it's a sound decision because of the system they're putting in. And I, I think to some point, if you're talking about the health of that pond, I think that outweighs, you know, and I think what we're doing here, you know, and this is as the son and grandson of Waterman who died on the Chesapeake Bay, uh, the type of, of testing that they're doing will literally eliminate the commercial fishing industry and Waterman industry in that area for years, because it'll drive them off. I mean, and, and that'd be, we're not, it's not worth trading our traditional waterways and recreational and commercial fishing for another industry that we may or may not get.
Before the, the, this resolution, I just...
Mr. Irtan, also, I will, I'll say to you that I totally agree with you about the development that went on in the, the development that went on in the eighties, in the seventies, in the North End. None of us here would have voted for that.
No, I was...
And we can't go back to Cole, we can't go back and fix the Coles problem as it exists right now.
I don't know. I, I'll tell you from experience, because actually, it was nineteen ninety-eight that much of that came in. And first, we were told that as citizens, we had to give them all tax breaks if they were going to come here. The big boxes won't come here unless we give them tax breaks. And then it was every developer that wanted to do a subdivision didn't have to do sidewalks. Come on now. This is, I appreciate how far we've come, but I still don't believe, I, I agree with Mr. Rue, that the citizen is not the person who comes to the mayor first. It's the developer. And I'll be honest with you, they might be nice guys and they're a terrific company, but they're going to be gone once this thing gets built. Thank you for the time, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Hold, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Two-Nine-Three-Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Rue. Stand away from the windows. Yeah. We're okay. In here. All right. At this, at this time, I'll adjourn the motion to approve Resolution Two-Nine-Three-Four.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Kitro.
Resolution Number Two-Nine-Three-Four, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, adopting Vision Zero as a city's traffic and engineering policy and establishing a Vision Zero Task Force. I'll speak up. Whereas the Salisbury Charter SC eleven dash two gives the city charge of all public ways of the city, excepting those under state and county jurisdiction. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to pursue an end to traffic fatalities and serious injuries within the city's limits. And whereas the city recognizes that all people have a fundamental right to safe and equitable transportation networks via foot, bicycle, transit, or automotive, sorry, automobile. And whereas the city recognizes that there are no traffic accidents, and that every traffic derived collision, injury, or fatality is preventable. And that whereas it is the express goal of the city to eliminate all traffic fatalities and serious injuries by January first, two thousand and thirty. And whereas the city recognizes that the most effective way to prevent traffic fatalities is to work at the systemic level of the transportation system by improving corridors and neighborhoods. And whereas Vision Zero is an internationally recognized and proven way to reduce traffic fatalities and zero, serious injuries. And whereas the city desires to adopt Vision Zero as the city's traffic and engineering policy for all public ways in the city for which the city has jurisdiction. And whereas the city council determined that a task force could be helpful in advising the city and overseeing all Vision Zero efforts. And whereas the Vision Zero Task Force shall collect, analyze, and act on crash and street data in order to prepare the Vision Zero action plan and recommend policy related to Vision Zero. And whereas the Vision Zero Task Force may consist of members from the following organizations: City of Salisbury Mayor Administration, City of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure Development, City of Salisbury Department of Field Operations, City of Salisbury Police Department, City of Salisbury Fire Department, City of Salisbury Department of Information Services, City of Salisbury Housing and Community Development Department, City of Salisbury Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee, City of Salisbury Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Administration, Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Safety Office, Maryland State Police Wycomico County's Office, Salisbury University, Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Advisory Committee. Whereas the council requires that the City of Salisbury Vision Zero Action Plan be presented to the council by the Director of Infrastructure and Development and adopted no later than July first, two thousand and twenty, with a plan subsequently updated every five years. And whereas the Director of Infrastructure and Development Department shall make a yearly progress report to council in an open form prior to July thirty-first every year, beginning in July two thousand and twenty. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that for the purposes and reasons here and above, set forth, the City of Salisbury adopts Vision Zero as a city's traffic and engineering policy and establishes a Vision Zero Task Force.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number Two-Nine-Three-Four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Kitro. I'll adjourn the motion to approve ordinance, number Two-Five-Three-Three for the second reading.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. Mr. Tillman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's an ordinance of the city to establish a Riverwalk construction reimbursement program to remote and accelerate new commercial construction or expansion along the Riverwalk areas to encourage development in and near the downtown area and districts tied to the Riverwalk. Whereas the city seeks to incentivize the construction and expansion of business interests and near, in and near the downtown area, the central business zoning district, the riverfront redevelopment zoning district one, riverfront redevelopment zoning district two, and areas designated as having future Riverwalk. In the adopted two thousand and fifteen downtown master plan and order, increase the amount of economic activity, act, increase the amount of economic activity in those areas. And whereas implementing the Riverwalk construction reimbursement program will allow financially responsible businesses to construct or expand business interests in those areas, which will further result in positive economic and social effects, including but not limited to increases in cultural activity opportunities, employment opportunities, extracurricular activities, business activities, and environmental upgrades. And whereas the city, through the Department of Infrastructure and Development, shall process applications connected to the Riverwalk reconstruction reimbursement program to ensure compliance with the program and adequate funding for the, a program, and shall review and approve all completed applications before benefits tied to the program are approved and enjoyed by developers. And whereas the city has developed a Riverwalk construction reimbursement program application with specific requirements that should be monitored and administered by the Department of Infrastructure and Development in order to ensure that all information and submissions are correct and properly considered. And whereas the ma, uh, the mayor joins with the city council recommending the implementation of the program and application process, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the municipal code of the city, Title Twelve, uh, Dash Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Faces be amended by adding Section twelve-point-two-four-point-oh-six-oh to read as follows. Riverwalk construction reimbursement program is hereby established for the purpose of accelerating the construction or expansion of new commercial buildings and development along the incomplete and planned Riverwalk areas in order to create positive economic effects in the general central business zoning district, riverfront redevelopment zoning district one, riverfront redevelopment zoning district twenty-two, and areas designated as having future Riverwalk in the adopted two thousand and fifteen downtown master plan. The RCRP application process shall be administered by the Director of Department of Infrastructure and Development, subject to appropriation of necessary funds for the program from year to year and final approval of all applications and the expenditure of funds by a resolution approved by the city council. The city hereby adopts the application submitted with this ordinance and attaches Exhibit A as the initial approved application and grants administrative powers to the Director of Department of Infrastructure and Development to process and monitor submitted applications in conjunction with the Department of Finance and to make necessary changes in the application and its requirements as needed and deemed necessary to properly administer the program and monitor and disperse appropriated and approved funds for the program. Upon approval of the resolution by the city council for funding of any RCRP project, the development, the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall prepare an RCRP agreement. And among other requirements as determined by the Department of Infrastructure and Development, shall require the owners of the subject property to convey title to the completed Riverwalk to the City of Salisbury. All reimbursable costs to be paid as a result of the RCRP application shall run with the land and be payable only to the then-current owners of the land adjoining each Riverwalk construction project from which the Riverwalk was conveyed and for which an application was received and approved. The city may suspend or terminate the continuance of the RCRP program by resolution or by not appropriation, appropriating funds to continue the program. And then the Riverwalk reimbursement program, excuse me, not doing too well.
We're getting you, we're getting you some water.
At, at this time, I think it's, uh, the poll. So the, um, the application there has been in the packet since the, uh, work sessions. There's, you know, a couple minor changes to the application packet, but pretty much it sets forth the, the amount of money that they would receive and the, you know, how it will be administered. And obviously, this is a flexible document that can change as necessary in the future.
Right. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number Two-Five-Three-Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Votes four to, four to zero. I'll adjourn the motion to approve ordinance number Two-Five-Three-Four for the second reading.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman.
Okay, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY nineteen general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Whitmer Public Safety Group from the sale of handguns to be used to repair the moisture barrier along the foundation of the Salisbury Police Department. Whereas on October sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, the Salisbury Police Department traded seventy-two previously issued police officer duty handguns. And whereas those handguns are described as, and I'll abbreviate this, forty-nine Glock Model Twenty-One handguns, twelve Glock Model Twenty-One... abbreviate this, 49 Glock Model 21 handguns, 12 Glock Model 21 SF semi-automatic 45s, 5 Glock Model 36 semi-automatic 45s, 4 Glock Model 19 semi-automatic 45s, 1 Glock Model 19C semi-automatic 9mm, and 1 Glock Model 26 semi-automatic 9mm. And whereas the aforementioned 72 handguns were sold to Whitmer Public Safety Group in the amount of $21,747.01, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department received payment from the group for the handguns on November 20th, and where, November 20th, 18, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department is requesting those funds be transferred to the Salisbury Police Department Building Maintenance Account in the amount of $27,747. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department will utilize the funds appropriated from the sale of these guns to make repairs along the foundation of the Salisbury Police Department, and whereas additional funds needed to complete the repairs will be taken from the Salisbury Police Department surplus funds available from the vacant salary positions, and whereas the moisture barrier along the foundation has been identified as in need of repair in order to prevent water seepage and eventual degradation of the foundation, and whereas once the project is completed, the project will be removed from the Salisbury Police Department Capital Improvement Fund, Plan, I'm sorry, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2019 General Fund Budget is hereby amended with an increase in the general fund of $21,747 and increase in the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments?
No, but I did find out what Whitmer does with the guns, and they do refurbish them and we sell them. I did find that out, I researched.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Any other comments? All those in favor of, of ordinance number 2534 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, votes four to zero. Chief, you can get your moisture barrier.
On a day like today, I really appreciate it.
Chief's grateful. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2535 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson.
Mr. Boda.
I'll give Ms. Blake.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
I'm grateful, too.
Mr. Tillman.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2019 budget to appropriate funds for street resurfacing and concrete repair, whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development has completed paving and concrete repair projects throughout the city that are eligible for reimbursement from the MDOTSHA, and whereas the city has received reimbursement from the MDOTSHA in the sum of $123,864.47, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development seeks to reimburse the operating account from which the original appropriation was budgeted in order to continue the citywide paving and concrete programs, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2019 budget is hereby amended as follows: Increase the MDOT reimbursement budget by $123,864.47, and increase the citywide street maintenance account by an equivalent amount.
For any, for everybody that's at home also, we under, we are under severe thunderstorm warning, which we're experiencing here, so hopefully you can hear us. Any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing, hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2535 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2536 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's harmony.
It is.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2019 General Fund Budget to appropriate funding to the Business Development Marketing Fund, whereas as of March 18th, 2019, the city has sold $913.37 worth of merchandise at the downtown Salisbury Visitor Center, and whereas the city would like to return those funds to the downtown Visitor Center Marketing Account on a regular basis to make sure the Visitor Center has a healthy stock of merchandise, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2019 General Fund Budget be, and is hereby amended as follows, increase account marketing by $913.30 and decrease the account per city merchandise, excuse me, yes, decrease the account for city merchandise by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2536 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the.
It's either loud or soft, this thing is not me.
And the chair votes aye, four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2537 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Blake. Mr. Tillman.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $4,000 and approving a budget amendment to the FY 2019 Grant Fund to appropriate funds for the Salisbury Wycomico Integrated First Care Team, whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has a community need grant program, and whereas the purpose of the grant program is to benefit organizations that serve health and human services, education, arts, and culture, community development, environment, and historical preservation, whereas the City of Salisbury submitted a grant application to CFEES for funding to support the Salisbury Wycomico Integrated First Care Team, and whereas the CFEES has awarded the city funds in the amount of 4,000, and whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with CFEES to find how those funds must be expended, and whereas all funds shall be used to provide medical transport for SWIFT patients who are otherwise unable to attend necessary medical appointments and meetings, and whereas 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter forbids contracts requiring expenditure in excess of the amount appropriated for that general classification or expenditure, and forbids any office, department, or agency from expending funds not appropriated, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this agreement must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits to the council of the city, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, or that Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore to accept 4,000, and be it further ordained that the city's fiscal year 2019 General Fund Budget be hereby amended as follows: Increase in the FY 19 CFEES SWIFT Transport Revenue Account by 4,000, and increase in the FY 19 CFEES SWIFT Transport Expense Account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? The only comment I have is, great program.
Mm-hmm.
Works, has been working very well, and I'm sure will continue to. If there's no other comments, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance, ordinance number 2537 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Mrs. Nichols, we have any comments?
No, sir.
Anything for the good of the order? Be careful going home, everyone, okay? And if there's no further business, we are adjourned.